They may put him in the meeting too, I don't know.
That's okay.
Thank you.
Whatever you want.
So whenever we can.
Clarify it so that it goes through. Um. With it, I'm okay. If it got my.
Okay, we're about to reach out.
But I'm okay, right?
Yeah, okay.
We'll call this meeting of the Craven County Board of Commissioners regular session for Monday, August the first, two thousand twenty-two to order. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Here.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Here.
Commissioner Smith.
Here.
Commissioner Liner.
Here.
Commissioner Mark.
Here.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Here.
Chairman Jones.
Here. If you will, please let's stand together as we are led in prayer by our county attorney first, and then we will remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to the American flag.
God of heaven, we come before you today seeking wisdom and guidance in how we should lead. Our hearts are drawn to the prayer of David in the twenty-fifth Psalm, and we bring it to your ear once again. No one whose hope is in you will ever be put to shame, but they will be put to shame who are treacherous without excuse. Show me your ways, oh Lord, teach me your paths, guide me in your truth, and teach me, for you are God, my Savior, and my hope is in you all day long. There is no part of our path that is a surprise to you; there is no treachery that is beyond your sight. Share with our leaders your unmatched wisdom, and let their actions today bless the world. We ask all this in the mighty name of Jesus. Amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies and gentlemen, we welcome you to the Board of Commissioners meeting, which is your meeting, and to those that may be viewing online, we welcome you. We would ask for those in attendance with us this evening, if you have your cellphones, would you please make sure they are silenced so they would not disrupt this meeting? We would greatly appreciate it. Commissioners, before we go into asking for any additions or deletions from tonight's agenda, I'd like to refer to the county manager. As each of you know, that we have canceled our next commissioner's meeting, and there are several items that he needs to put on the agenda this evening for consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We do have three items I'd ask to be added to the consent agenda. One is a proclamation for the New Bern High School class of nineteen seventy-two fifty-three Union. It was provided to via email late last week. We also have a proclamation for National Recovery Month, and that was also sent to you late last week. And the third item would be the Craven County two thousand twenty-three holiday schedule.
Okay, and you're asking that to be added to the consent agenda, which would be D, E, and F?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any objection to that? All right, are there any other additions or deletions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second. All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the agenda with including the additions on the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion pass. All right, the first item that we have on the business is the petition of citizens for agenda topics. Mr. Vice Chair, do we have any?
There's, there are no petitions for the agenda topics. There is for the other.
Okay, thank you, sir. Item two is the consent agenda. You have there the minutes of the July eighteenth, two thousand twenty-two meeting, tax releases and refunds, the school resource officer, physical year two thousand twenty-two rollover budget amendment, and then the other three items that the county manager mentioned. Are there any items you desire to pull from the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, so moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes, thank you. On Departmental Matters this evening, we have with us Ms. Leslie Young, a tax administrator, and she has two items. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Jones, good evening. Chairman Booker. Good evening to the Craven County Commissioners, and before I get started, I'd like to say a very special thank you. Today marks exactly nine months that I've been serving Craven County, so thank you again for allowing me. Chairman Jones, I come to you in compliance with Statute one oh five dash three twenty-one that asks for the charge, that I may charge the twenty-two taxes, but I cannot do that until Statute one oh five dash three seventy-three to present the settlement.
Okay, before we entertain a motion, are there any questions you have regarding the settlement of the two thousand twenty-one tax levy? Here none, questions, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion pass, all right? B. Which is the, the next item would be the two thousand twenty-two charge to the tax collector, and any comments you want to make on that?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, any comments or questions from the board? Okay, this is to authorize the tax collector with the collection of the two thousand twenty-two tax levy. And any discussion? Here none, do I have a motion or have a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion on the motion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion pass. All right, thank you, Ms. Young, appreciate it.
That was quick and easy.
Yes, sir.
The next item is the sheriff, he has three items this evening for the board. Good evening, Sheriff.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. Thank you for having me this evening, I've got three items. These are, two of them are going to be rollovers from last year's budget. This is basically items that we have ordered, placed, ordered for, and still waiting for them to come in. Ammunition, uniforms, items of such, so we're still having a hard time getting a lot of the equipment we need in a timely manner. The first one is the jail FY twenty-two rollover. These funds are allocated in our forty-three sixteen or jail account files. There's a list of those items, and we're looking to rollover, it's in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars for various items that were purchased during last budget year.
Okay, any questions for the sheriff on this before we entertain a motion? Here none, do I?
Make a motion.
All right, I have a motion and a second, any discussion on the motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of twenty-five thousand three hundred and seventy-nine dollars? Here no discussion, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes, all right, item B.
Mr. Chairman, the next one is going to be the sheriff's fiscal year twenty-two rollover. Much like the jail, many of the, all these are items that were purchased during last year's budget, and the funds were allocated in our forty-three ten or sheriff account lines. Ammunition, other supplies, and some capital outlay. Much of this is stuff, once again, stuff that we had placed during our last year's budget and have not received yet.
Okay, any questions?
Chairman, it's in the amount of twenty-three thousand forty-two dollars.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of twenty-three thousand forty-two dollars. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McCabe.
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell.
Yes.
Commissioner Smith.
Yes.
Commissioner Liner.
Yes.
Commissioner Mark.
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker.
Yeah.
Chairman Jones.
Yes, all right, and C.
Mr. Chairman, the next is a vehicle donation from our county ABC board. They donated a two thousand twelve Chevrolet Traverse, which is an SUV to the Craven County Sheriff's Office. We're asking that the commissioners accept this into our current fleet and will help us assume the responsibilities that come with such as future registrations, repairs, fuel, maintenance, and any other expenses that may arise in conjunction with this vehicle. It's going to be utilized by a position that y'all approved in our budget as the jail navigator. So that person that's put in that position will use it to go to and from our faith-based organizations, our nonprofits, and Hope Recovery, and even down to Jacksonville if needed, to that facility to either transport or help facilitate movement of these people and their next steps.
Okay, any questions?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the vehicle donation of the two thousand twelve Chevy Traverse. Any discussion on the motion?
One question, what, what's the mileage? Do you have any deal with the mileage?
I think it's roughly ninety thousand.
So it's still in pretty good shape?
Sir, that apparently they, in their budget, they had a new, got a new vehicle.
Any additional discussion? Here none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Propose, motion pass. Sheriff, if you want to give us a little update this evening on any others?
Yes, sir. I'd like to take this time to thank each of the commissioners and our county manager for the, what y'all have done to help my office, and I'm sure every county office and department, to retain and recruit good career employees. I can't tell you, you know, how much it means to me to be able to go to our people and tell them that our commissioners support them one hundred percent. And, you know, my thirty-five years of experience in this business, we've never been faced with situations like we have now. There's never been a shortage of law enforcement, public safety. There's never been a shortage of good quality applicants to choose from, but we're, we're here now. That's where we are. And many of them are just getting out of the profession altogether, so we have to do everything we can to recruit and retain these people, especially when it comes to our SROs. And I appreciate each of y'all for your support, overwhelmingly support, to invest in, in our employees. And Jack, I thank you for all the work you did with me as well, and I just, I can't thank each of you enough. I know it was tough, but I appreciate y'all investing in our people.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Also, one more thing, we've had in Wayne County this afternoon, we had three deputies shot serving an involuntary commitment in a domestic violence situation, so our people will be assisting there this evening if needed. We're on standby, but if you would keep them in your thoughts and prayers. One of them is very, very seriously injured, the other two are undergoing surgery right now.
Is the assailant in custody?
He is barricaded in a house, so we've got the FBI and some of the other agents. He is barricaded in a house, so we've got the SBI and some of the other agencies surrounding the house right now, utilizing gas and stuff like that to try to get him out, but it's a waiting game, and, you know, just right now, our thoughts and prayers are with those deputies and families. Thank you.
Any questions for the sheriff, from you? Thank you, Sheriff, appreciate what you do and all your force. All right, item five, we have maintenance and facilities. We have with us Mr. Zack, good evening, sir.
Fuel site project budget amendment. The approval of the FY2021/2022 annual budget, the Board of Commissioners directed staff to develop a project to build a dedicated fueling center for Craven County vehicles. On July 6, 2021, the board approved Vaughn and Milton as the engineering firm for this project, and on February 7, 2022, the board approved the contract with JF Petroleum Group as a provider for the purchase, purchase and construction of the fueling center and related equipment. At that time, a budget amendment in the amount of $1,229,240 was approved, and the amount was added to the general fund budget of the facilities and maintenance department. With the beginning of a new fiscal year, the amount remaining for this project must be rebudgeted so that the purchase orders and outstanding invoices can be carried forward. As of June 30, 2022, we have the following amounts remaining in the project that will need to be, excuse me, carried over. General construction, JF Petroleum, $797,564. Engineering and design, Vaughn and Milton, $28,603. Other than general construction, $77,000. Project contingency, $100,000. Project budget, $1,3167. Board is being requested to approve the budget amendment shown as attachment 5A in the amount of $1,3167 in order to carry over the unspent funds from fiscal year 2021/2022 into the current fiscal year so this project can continue uninterrupted.
Okay, are there any questions for Mrs. Zack?
No, I think it's long overdue. Now, we don't have to worry about hurricanes anymore.
And we have site work starting in two weeks.
That's good.
That was my question.
Yep. We're going to update today.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $1,3167. Is any further discussion on the motion? I would just say, for those citizens that may not know exactly what this is, you know, this has been a, on our capital improvement plan for many years to have our own facility. Right now, we depend upon the city of New Bern for our fuel, but going forth, we will have a place out by the Judicial Center. It's going to be very accessible for our law enforcement, for other departments, and something that not only this board, but prior boards have worked towards, and a great day when this is completed. So thank you for your leadership on it, Zack, you've done.
Just a quick, another quick question. Just a ballpark completion time, what would be your?
We were hoping for the fall, but it looks like right now, just because of onsite delays, probably end of the year.
Okay.
But we're going to continue to update Jack and Gene on that as we kind of progress, but right now, we're looking at the end of the year.
Good.
Any other questions? Here none, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, all right, and B.
This is a rollover of vehicles from, that we ordered in August of 2021. A purchase order was placed last fiscal year for three Ford F-250s with Piedmont Truck Center Incorporated. Due to pandemic and supply chain issues, vehicles and parts are on back order. The department did not receive the trucks last year, therefore, we are requesting to reallocate funding for three Ford F-250s in this fiscal year. Piedmont Truck Center has been in contact with the county, providing details and updates as they become available. The board is being requested to approve a budget amendment shown as attachment 5B in the amount of $102,807 in order to carry over the unspent funds from fiscal year 2021/2022 into the current fiscal year so the vehicles can be paid for when they arrive.
Okay, any questions?
So moved.
Second. Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $102,807. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Zack.
Thank y'all.
All right, item six is the water department. We have Mr. Dale, good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chairman Commissioners. Here to speak about authorization of a hydraulic modeling project. Hydraulic modeling concerning a municipal water system is a study analysis of water usage trends and a forecasting for total future water needs. It's been several years since the hydraulic study was performed on the Craven County Water System. During that time, measurable water usage trends have been altered by residential commercial development. Additionally, Lawson's Creek interim bypass booster station is pumping water from the water treatment plant in Northwest Craven. This is a fundamental change in how water, this water system has historically performed. The study will reveal if there's any measurable changes in pressure throughout the system. By performing this hydraulic model study, Craven County Water will have an updated, accurate, holistic view of how the system is operating. The plan is to install 12 pressure transmitters throughout the system to collect real-time pressure data and update consumption data based on our billing. This will ensure the model is current and accurate as possible. A calibrated hydraulic model is essential to developing a comprehensive, long-term capital improvement project, capital improvement plan for the water department. In order to proceed, staff request the Board of Commissioners approve a budget amendment shown as attachment 6 dot A in the amount of $48,000. Additionally, county staff request the board approve the attached resolution exempting this project from formal request for qualification process. Along with the exemption, the board is requested to authorize staff to contract with the firm CJS Conveyance LLC to provide engineering services for this project in an amount not to exceed $50,000.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Dale? I do have one. You talk about you're going to install 12 pressure transmitters.
Yes, sir.
As far as the western part of the county, you know, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but we've had concern over pressure in the Coast City area, especially East Swamp Road through Cicero Riggs Road somewhere, Hobbs Road over in that area.
Yes, sir.
Are your plans to put a transmitter anywhere in that facility?
So the plans are, the plans are to put a transmitter on each one of the tanks, that would be Fort Barrow, Jasper, because we want to see how those tanks, we call it riding, so as, because the demand rises and falls, it's diurnal, so you use more water during the day, less water at night, so the tanks fill and drop, so we want to get an idea of how that, because that's how you keep pressure in the system, is through elevated storage tanks. Also, in addition, we'll have one in East Craven, at that end of the system, we'll have one in Cove City, we'll have one over Ponty Neck, we'll have one on each side of the Lawson Creek Booster Station to measure the suction side of the booster station, which is pulling water from East Craven into Northwest Craven. We'll have one on the discharge side of that pump, so we can see the pressure. That'll be somewhere along Highway 70, just beyond the booster station, we'll have one in the Bryce, well, actually, two in the Bryce's Creek area, one towards Wildflower, and then another one just, I think, about, let me put it somewhere in that area is where we'll have that other one. And these will be mounted on hydrants for the most part, and so what we'll do is we'll, we'll deploy the system, leave them in the system for three weeks. You come back, and the engineer firm collects that, downloads all the data, and they take that data, so it's collecting that pressure data constantly, 24 hours a day. They'll upload it into the system, and then they'll place that information they get into the hydraulic model, we can get a kind of a three-week process of how demand, so we'll have a good idea of what the pressure is. Because right now, we're flying blind, we don't have any idea. We can operate the wells, and we can mainly check tank data, but as far as SCADA system goes, and as far as 24-hour highs in the system, it's really hard in terms of what is actually going on until we get complaints in the system. So this will kind of give us an idea of what is going on officially throughout the whole system.
What's the status of the Lawson Creek Pump Station?
The Lawson Creek Pump Station, we're set to keep that off. We're getting our last hit, it should be disruption in?
August, in August?
Yeah, there, so that's, it's already been, so they've got all the permits in place, they're just in the process of getting the file, putting their submittals in, they have to put the submittals into the engineering firm's sign-offs and everything, and that should be kicking off, I think, like you said, the timeframe was getting on August versus September.
We're getting close.
Getting very close, yes, sir. We've done all the locates, and like I said, we're just tying up from loose ends.
I won't go back to the transmitters, and in no way am I questioning, because you're the professional.
[laughing]
But I just want to make sure, and you did a great job outlining where you're putting the 12 at, and I think you're spread out, but this is a one-time thing that we're going to do, you know, we want to make sure we're spending recent county resources appropriately.
Absolutely.
Are there any other areas, I mean, you think that we're leaving out, that we need to go ahead and add a few more into it, or you feel comfortable with the 12 you got?
I feel comfortable with the 12 that we've got right now. My plan going forward is to try to find a distributor and to place these permanently in our system. The cost on those, I've gotten some prices, I won't say what they are, but they're not, they're relatively inexpensive, and they work off cloud or cellular data, and so we're looking at part of CIP going forward is to put X number that we can get into the budget each year and try to get those put in the system and kind of create a network throughout the entire system. So this is going to be, like I said, it's a one-shot thing, but I'm looking to bolster that permanently, you know, as we move forward.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Everyone, thank you for your exhaustive explanation. With it, you are clearly far more of an expert on this one than I am, so this may be a redundant question. When you're measuring the modeling of what is going on now, will this allow them to project the usage for the new housing developments that are either in the works or under, in the process of planning, and the one that comes down to is, there is a proposal to put several hundred housing units out in the River Bend area on that end of the county. So the use that we have today or 2022, it might be very different in 2024.
Yes, ma'am. So the nature of a hydraulic model is to allow, you put in the data that you have, you collect, and you calibrate that model, and with that, the engineering firm can then put, they can change multiple variables. So they could put in higher demand areas, they can do, they can simulate growth, they can simulate decline, they can do a whole bunch of different things, so you can, it's a way to kind of run a computer simulation, if you will, of how different things may affect the water system. So if we get a call that they want to put 150-house development in, you know, down to?
Someplace, yeah.
Calamine Road, then we can, we can go with the hydraulic model and put that in there and see what, project those demands and see how that would affect the pressure in the system.
But you have to know where we are now.
You have to know, we have to know where we are now, yes, and we have, we have very little data right now to put in that model. I think the last model that was done was basically they just took each township, each did, and basically just plugged in a lump consumption for that in there. So what we've done is we've broken out consumption by address for the entire county, and so we have that data, so we know what each individual hole is. And if, I guess they got this up now, this is just, this shows you where all, it's kind of difficult to see, but this is the entire county map, and the red dots you see there are where we're going to be putting those pressure transmitters. So if you see, we got one in around the Coast City, and then up in Fort Barrow, one Jasper, Ponty Neck Tank, then in the maneuver there, you can see the two on the Lawson Creek Pump Station, and then we got those in Bryce's Creek, and then down just north of the plant, and we go down in the Havlock and over to the 101 Pump Station, East Craven, and then out to the Adams Creek area. That's, what we, what we gained is to try to keep this under $50,000, this is, this is what we were able to keep, and I'm not doing that.
No.
And we were able to take those two on fresh transmitters, and that, we spread them out as best we could, but that it kept under that $50,000.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes, um, down in Hollow area here on Adam Creek Row, I know we got one to 101. The pressure down towards the Adam Creek is kind of low.
Yes, sir.
Can anything be done out there, especially with the fire department?
This will, this will be one thing, this, this is what this does, this, this helps us identify where there may be some issues, and we can start putting items in the capital improvement plan, whether it be upsizing lines, whether it be finding dead ends between three loops to try to get the pressure up to those areas, whether we can, you know, run an additional line extension to connect different, you know, what it is, is the, the system, you would like to build a system where it will operate no matter what you put in, but the system grows unfortunately slower than the county does a lot of times, and so you develop issues sometimes when you have lines that may be undersized and all, so this will help us figure out what areas we can focus on and apply our money to. And we want to, like Chairman Jones said, we want to spend that money in the best way that exists as correct.
Yeah, because what happened, if the fire truck there, it had a good water pressure, we didn't buy a lot of tankers.
Yes, sir.
By the water, so we really, really need that.
Yes, sir, absolutely, and that's what this will, this will do, you know, I, we can, we can come in and, and make a plan to improve, but without having this data and without having this study, we basically would go and go in our eyes, but we wouldn't.
Don't forget about us.
Throw us up to the wall and see that it sticks, and so we'd like to be able to really hit a whole room and we start doing these projects.
Okay. Any further questions?
Thank you.
All right, here none further questions, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second. We have a motion and a second, and you've already heard the request, but it is for a budget amendment in the amount of $48,000. It is also the resolution of exemption for engineering services and to authorize staff to contract with CJS Conveyance for $50,000, for an amount not to exceed $50,000. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner McKay?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, all right, and B. Mr. Gene?
I told, I told Dale I'd help him with this one.
All right.
So tonight, board, we're asking for the award of the telemetry and electrical upgrade contract related to the telemetry project. At the June 20th, 2022 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved the fiber construction portion of Phase 1 of the water system telemetry slash SCADA project. At that time, it was stated that the electrical and telemetry upgrade portion will be brought forward at a later time. In attempt to find cost efficiencies in the project, there have been several discussions with the apparent low bidder regarding optional upgrades that could be omitted from the project to better align the costs with the original engineer estimates that were created early in the project. These discussions have resulted in a reduction of the bid of $925,059. It is recommended by staff that Turner Murphy Company be awarded the project in the amount of $2,972,975.60. This phase of the project will provide connectivity, electronic controls, and accessibility of backup power generation for the critical water assets throughout Craven County. Ultimately, the entire water system will be monitored and controlled from the water treatment plant near Lewis Farm Road. And attachment 6B is a project ordinance amendment and related budget amendment in the amount of $5,164,144 that updates this project. The components of this project are broken out as follows. Construction of $5,965,419. Capital over $5,000 of $640,000. Engineering of $1,567,300. Contingency of $596,542 for a total project budget of $8,769,261. Construction encompasses the fiber construction, so of those amounts, the construction encompasses[1655.23] the fiber construction contract that was previously approved, as well as the new recommended contract that I'm asking for approval tonight. Additionally, in the construction number, $617,000 is based on the estimate to extend fiber from approximately the Slocum Creek area to Rogerville New Tech Academy in the Havlock area. Of that budget that I just went over, capital over $5,000 was previously approved and consists entirely of network switches that are needed for connectivity. Engineering reflects the design costs related to this project, and project contingency reflects 10% of the total construction costs. The request is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a project ordinance amendment and associated budget amendment in the amount of $5,164,144 to fund this project and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement with Turner Murphy Company, Inc., to perform this portion of the construction related to water telemetry and controls for this phase of this project. And staff and representatives from McKim and Crete are available if there are any questions.
Questions from the Board? I just would, Jack, Craig's not in the room, but tell us exactly where these funds are coming from and we make sure we understand.
Yes, sir. If you would, mine's stapled together here. It's the budget amendment that's on the attachments, the last page of your attachment. And I'm going to ask Craig to step in, too. I think I see his head coming through the window there. But, sir, we have allocated some of our American Rescue Plan, our ART dollars. Remember back in January, the Board allocated out the total allotment of the county. Mr. Gene, at the time, had a well, we call it a shovel-ready project here, and I'm going to turn it right over to Craig since he's at the podium ready to go.
Yeah, so if you look at the budget ordinance, you'll see that we elected to fund this project with $7.5 million of ART funding. The rest will come from the water fund dollars.
Okay.
And so this budget amendment takes what we already originally approved in the original ordinance and updates the numbers to the final total.
Okay, will that deplete that fund, then, the allocation that we put from the American Rescue Plan? Will that deplete that fund for that?
Yeah, for the water project. Water brought in for it, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, additional questions? All right, do I have a?
Make a motion, second.
Have a motion and a second. If you will, stay right there, Craig. Make sure we get it right. So you're doing the budget amendment of $5,164,144. You're also doing the project ordinance here of $8,769,261.
Correct.
All right, and then you're executing the agreement with Turner Murphy Co- Company.
Incorporated. Correct.
All right. We have that motion, we have a second. Any further discussion on the motion? Everybody understand, a lot of money here. All right, Madam Clerk, please call the rule.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Liner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you all, appreciate it. Gene, can I ask one last question in that? What kind of timing will we have on this project?
There is, both on this and on the fiber construction, they've got one year of performance, but there's also performance bonds that are tied into this, and they've got a year of the time of the contract from the time they can proceed to complete it. Is it a year, right gentleman?
A year for the fiber, maybe a couple months.
These are gentlemen from McKim and Crete, so that's why they're here.
Why are you standing right there? And Jack, and this is supposed to fix the problem that we have, that we've had several times where we have no water pressure in certain parts of the county, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I think I'll try to say it in my own words. So when Hurricane Florence hit, we lost our old cable line that went to all the sites. It cannot be repaired because we don't own the line, it's owned by the telephone company. This puts in fiber on the county network all across Craven County, 26.2 miles worth of fiber.
Yes.
And hooks up every asset that we have. So now Dale can sit at the water plant with his operators and he can see how everything's working together, and that's what we don't have now.
We all appreciate it.
Appreciate it, really.
All right, thank you. All right, Commissioners, next item is item seven with appointments. You have there the pending, current, and upcoming. On the pending, you have the Board of Equalization and Review for District Five. You have anybody for that, Commissioner McCabe, yet? All right, you can continue work on that. Craven Agent Planning Board?
On September, sir.
Okay, Craven County Board of Adjustments, the Volunteer Agriculture District. Also, Commissioners, we had one appointment that we had let ride for some time, did not reappoint this individual, it was a Havlock seat. And the reason we didn't reappoint it is because we were looking for somebody from Vanceburg. So each of our four libraries would have representation. Commissioner Liner currently sits on the regional board representing Havlock. Vanceburg has no one. At your desk this evening, you have there the application for Denise Smith. Denise is qualified, she serves on the Vanceburg Library Board has for many years. And Commissioner Mark, I would refer to you.
Yeah, I approve it.
Okay, so you make that nomination?
I'll make that nomination.
Okay, we have the nomination for Denise Smith, are there any additional nominations from the floor? Here none, we received Mr. Smith by acclamation, she would be appointed. And Madam Clerk, if you would, make sure that she knows that. The regional board does have a meeting in August, so she would need to be notified. All right, any other pending appointments? Here none, we will go to current. You have the EMS Services. The first one, you have Ms. Jean Matthews from Cove City. I would ask the Board if they would to reappoint her. Do you have any additional nominations? Here none, she would be accepted by acclamation. You have the next, Mr. Doug Ferguson, who's the citizen rep.
Make a motion to reappoint.
Okay, we have nomination for Mr. Ferguson, any additional nominations? Here none, he will be accepted by acclamation. Mr. Mark Dale from the RIMs Volunteer Fire Department, Commissioner Mitchell?
Recommend he be reappointed.
Okay, we have the recommendation on any additional nominations. Here none, we accept Mr. Dale by acclamation. And then you have Deborah Rogers, who's a representative for Carolina East Emergency Director.
Recommend reappointment.
Okay, we have the recommendation of additional nominations. Here none, she will be accepted by acclamation. The next one is also for the Emergency Medical Services. You have in your agenda packets, Attachment 7B, the applicant Daniel Whitehead, who seeks for the Cherry Point Fire and Rescue Seat. And this is to fill a seat that was previously held by another individual.
I make an approval.
Okay, we have nomination for Mr. Whitehead, are there any additional nominations? Here none, we accept Mr. Whitehead by acclamation. Next, you have the Craven County Clean Sweep Board, both seek to be reappointed. The first one is Ms. Barbara Smith.
I would reappoint Barbara Smith.
Okay, we have nomination of Ms. Smith, are there any additional nominations? We accept her by acclamation, and the next would be Judy Lloyd.
I appoint Judy Lloyd.
Okay, we have nomination of Ms. Lloyd, do we have additional nominations? Here none, we accept her by acclamation. Next would be the River Bend Board of Adjustment, Commissioner Mitchell, Kelly Forrest.
Yes, please reappoint, Kelly.
Okay, we have the nomination of Mr. Forrest, Kelly Forrest, are there additional nominations? Here none, we accept Kelly Forrest. And then you have the Fire Tax Commissioners Board, Mr. Otto Simmons, who represents the RIMs Fire District for Township Eight. Okay?
Recommend reappointment.
We have the nomination, are there any additional nominations? Here none, we accept that one by acclamation. Are there any more current that are not on the agenda? Here none, you see the upcoming terms expiring in August 2022. Please take note of those. All right, next on the agenda would be the County Attorney's Report, Mr. Grady.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next item would be petitions of citizens under general topics. The Vice Chair has indicated there is someone. We would ask that each speaker that comes forward would speak for three minutes. We do have a time clock, and if you would, as you come forward, please give your name and address.
Sarah Hathorn.
Hathorn.
Hello.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening. I'm Sarah Hathorn. I am the dog manager at Colonial Capital Human Society. And I wanted to talk to you tonight about the increase in instances I've witnessed lately, the past year or so, of citizens being turned away at Craven Panico Animal Services when they are trying to surrender either their pet dog, or cat, or stray that they come from. They are often sent to us. We are a private humane society, we do the best we can, and it's significant, but we can only do so much. It's my understanding that Craven Panico Animal Services is mandated by the county to accept animals that come in, and should they run out of space, they're mandated to euthanize animals that have been there long enough. And while none of us like the thought of that, the alternative is far worse for the animals and for the community. So I just wanted to start that discussion and hope that we can continue it and try to find a better way to help not only these animals, but again, the community. We can't know the problem of the stray population, which is overwhelming in Craven County, unless it's properly documented. And by not accepting animals, they're not documenting this. So their numbers look good because they document intakes, adoptions, and euthanizations. Euthanasia is low, but what's not documented are all the ones turned away, so they don't have to deal with that. And so we can't begin to fix the problem until we know what the problem is. And from my standpoint at Colonial Capital, it's significant. So I hope we can start to fix the problem.
Thank you, ma'am. We appreciate you coming before the Board. All right, Mr. Vice Chair, anyone else?
That's it.
Okay. All right, next item would be the County Manager's Report, Mr. White.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, appreciate the opportunity. I don't have a whole lot of comments tonight, I was just going to kind of update you on what's been going on for the last couple of weeks. Last week, I had the opportunity to meet with all the public sector leaders here in Craven County. We had lunch last week, which is something we haven't done in a long time. There were a lot of new faces, but a lot of excitement about serving Craven County from a lot of different perspectives. We have new leadership at Havlock, relatively new in the city of New Bern, new leadership at Carolina East, new leadership at Craven County Schools. So once we all got together and talked about mutual issues, this one, however, focused on workforce development, which we're all seeing and, of course, the Board dealt with on Friday. Last week, I also attended a group called RAI. They're a group out of Orange County that's working on a needs assessment for Craven County. They got a grant from State Department of Health and Human Services to look at the opioid crisis. What they're doing is they're interviewing lots of different folks who work in this sector in Craven County, whether it be government, medicine, emergency medicine, law enforcement, the whole nine yards. And they're looking where there's gaps and what those gaps look like and how they can be filled and what resources are out there to do that. I think it's a really great exercise, particularly now, as we talked about on Friday with the opioid settlement money coming. We've got professionals leading this, and this was the second meeting, and I've been really pleased with the turnout and the participation of all the different agencies in Craven County. Also, last week, I met with the Craven Community College President, Ray Stats. We had a good meeting, continued our conversations about the leased property in the industrial park for the public safety training facility. We are moving forward, hopefully have that on your agenda in September, and look forward to the college's pursuit of state funds and federal funds as that project, you know, gets designed and gets allocated out. So other than that, I'm here for questions if you have them.
All right, Commissioners, any questions for the manager?
Thank you, have a great night.
Thank you, sir. All right, next would be Commissioners' Report. Commissioner McCabe, you're beginning your due this evening?
I don't have any on the chair.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes, I have a meeting tomorrow, investment meeting at the hospital, and I have a safety night out at Fairfield Harbor, and that's all I have to report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Commissioner Mitchell?
Nothing to report.
Commissioner Liner?
Okay, sir.
Commissioner Smith?
Nothing to report.
Vice Chair Booker?
I'd only add that Mr. Mark mentioned tomorrow night is National Night Out, 5:00, and it's all over the county. Opportunity to meet some of the law enforcement folks and to have some fun, I guess, for lack of a better way to say it. So if you have an opportunity to join some of those folks, do it. That's it.
Okay. Board of Commissioners recessed their meeting last time to reconvene this past Friday, July the 29th. And the Board, we spent several hours here and just to inform the citizens that Sheriff was talking about, this Board of Commissioners heard a lot of information that had been prepared by staff in trying to retain and recruit employees here in Craven County. A big investment of tax dollars were spent as an investment, and we believe it was the right thing to do, it was unanimous vote. We believe in the employees of this county, believe in law enforcement. A lot of money was directed towards our law enforcement, too, especially our school resource officers. We do have a shortage right now of applicants, and the Commissioners saw the need and they invested in that. The Sheriff feels confident now that he's got a competitive salary to go out and try to recruit some individuals to be in our schools when they go back in session. Regardless of whether he's got them in time, he's committed to this Board that he will have personnel in every school at the beginning of the school year. I want to commend the Board of Commissioners for the time that you put into it, a lot of decisions were made, and I appreciate that. Also, the last thing I'll just say to you is, at that meeting, the Board decided that we would cancel our August 15th Commissioners' Meeting due to, usually in August, we have sort of a light agenda. We were able to attend to some of those items this evening, the others will be pushed to the first meeting in September. So if you will, please help us share with the citizens of the county, we will not be meeting for our next regular scheduled meeting. So as a Board of Commissioners, we will not, unless something has to be called, we will not come back together until September. All right, anything else to bring before the Board of Commissioners this evening? Here none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, no move.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, stand adjourned.